Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:01 if we can stand and say the plan.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So do we have correspondence tonight?
We do. The piece that we included here, this is a copy of the flyer that we put out for our school board student rep session that we're holding. So I'll have to find out if Lil is able to make it. As of right now, we have 13 districts that have already signed up, and several of those districts have multiple student reps. So we're excited about the response, and I suspect we'll get quite a few more before December.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Commendations, good news.
Yeah.
Well, Wendy?
Great. So I'm going to present on behalf of Lil, who was nice enough to send some notes over this evening.
Awesome.
Goffstown High School Apply New Hampshire Day, which was formerly known as I Am College Bound, sponsored by the New Hampshire Higher Ed Assistance Foundation, was held here at Goffstown High School on November 2nd in the library. 141 seniors attended the in-school event and were able to apply to New Hampshire State colleges and universities for free. Over 250 applications were submitted, and the process was overseen by the great school counselors here at Goffstown High School, as well as admission representatives from Southern New Hampshire University and Keene State. This event made it possible for students to have a cumulative $10,000 in application fees. A scholarship will be awarded in the spring to one of the college-bound seniors who participated in the event, and a banner is hanging over there in the library with signatures from the students who participated. So it was just a fantastic event. This past weekend, the Future Business Leaders of America helped clean up the sides of the road with the litter critters here in Goffstown, so we very much appreciate them doing that. The Veterans Day Committee will be hosting a breakfast for local veterans tomorrow at 9 o'clock here in the library. They'll be provided with refreshments and great conversations from some of our high school servers. The Hypnotize Show will be here in the theater on November 16th, and the GHS Theater production of Clue was last week. It was an amazing production, for those of you that were able to see it. So thank you to the cast and crew for putting on an amazing show. Elsewhere in the district, both Maple Avenue and Bartlett had their annual Halloween parades last Tuesday. They'd like to thank the Goffstown High School marching band, who were actually at both schools playing some spooky flair for the event. And they really would like both schools to thank all of the members of the community that came out to wave to all of the students who were marching in the parade. It was an awesome day. Maple Ave's parent group also had a successful fundraiser event this past Saturday. The Color Run has been one of their biggest fundraisers over the last few years. The race started over at Parks and Recreation, went down to the baseball fields, and then they came back to Parks and Rec. Over at Bartlett, their amazing volunteer, Doris Demers, received the 2023 Spirit of New Hampshire Award in Concord on October 23rd. Doris has served in the Americor Seniors as a foster grandparent for 23 years. At the age of 88 years young, she still volunteers 30 hours a week over at Bartlett for a grand total of 23,000 hours that she's given to her second and third grade classrooms. So I was humbled. The Bartlett community had asked me to go over and present a bell to Ms. Doris for her achievement. Just watching the students, their faces light up when we talked about Ms. Doris, she's a very special person, so we're very happy to have her.
Nice.
Also, over at Bartlett, the Red Cross taught our second graders about fire safety on October 27th. They also had our school resource officer, Officer Allison, led an assembly to teach students about Halloween safety before they went out for trick-or-treat. Over at Glen Lake, they had a fall celebration last week with a wide variety of fall activities, including a fall taste test, pumpkin painting, and decorating crafts, and pumpkin bowling, which I bet I would have really liked.
These are small pumpkins.
And over at Glen Lake, I'm assuming so.
These are not big pumpkins, small ones.
And over at Glen Lake, their annual food drive for the Goffstown Food Network starts actually today and will go on for the next two weeks. Kindergarten students will combine math with the food drive as they count, tally, and chart their contributions received. So lots going on in the district.
Yes, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commendations, good news? Ginny, go ahead.
I was very impressed with the trick-or-treaters that came to my house. There were not as many this year, but for kids coming to your house to get free candy, they were very polite, very respectful, more than glad to talk about their costumes, about school, just really nice kids. I just thought they were cool. So I think our kids here in Goffstown are respectful and really cool kids to talk to an old lady and make her day. And also, the Boy Scouts had a food drive this weekend, and we're very successful. So thanks to them for collecting all the food through the food banks.
Thanks, Ginny. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Come on up. Hello. So you know the drill. State your name and address for the record.
Nancy Beederman, Byham Road, New Boston. Good evening. I was the one that requested the 91A right-to-know on all the non-academic surveys given at Goffstown High School at the beginning of the school year. I did this because a parent came to me concerned about what her child told her about some of the questions being asked. The teacher did not say the survey was optional, and the parent had not given permission for their child to answer the questions asked. The Goffstown School Board does have a policy, ILD and ILD-R, about student surveys. I have concern about this policy, as it has not been updated since 2009, and it does not include the 2017 amended RSA 186-11IX/D, which stated that written consent is required before a student is allowed to participate in non-academic surveys or questionnaires. This is now an opt-in provision. It used to be an opt-out. If you look at your current ILD policy, it also states that all surveys need to be approved by the superintendent or designee before being administered. Was this done with the surveys given at Goffstown High School? I found some with spelling errors, and one that there was a copy of a form from North Carolina. The teacher could not retype the form. Before tonight's meeting, I emailed each of you a copy of all the surveys and the information sheet updating the non-academic survey policy that was sent by the Department of Education. I would hope you would take the time and read each and every one of them and see that there were questions asked that, as a parent, I wonder why the teacher would need to know this information. My other concerns are, is who has access to this information after the teachers gathered it, and what happens to this information? I was also disappointed while watching the school board meeting, when this topic was brought up, that some of you couldn't believe that someone would ask for this information. I was not asking for the information because teachers are asking students about their favorite ice cream flavor. Asking a child about sexual or personal information is crossing the line, especially without parent consent. In fact, they all broke the law. Finally, you were elected to keep students safe and make sure they receive an adequate education. When a concerned citizen brings forth a question, I would hope that each and every one of you would do your own research. It's very disheartening that the superintendent's and the school board's response to all the public complaints this year is to change the existing policy. Do you not want transparency? Do you not want the public to know what they're paying for with their tax money? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there any other public comment? No? All right. So we'll close public comment and move on. We have two board meetings to approve. The first one is October 16th. Did everybody have a chance to read through it? Anybody see anything? If not, can take a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Jared. Is there a second? Second by Ginny. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous. And then the next one is October 18th.
Motion to approve October 18th as presented.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second by Ginny? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous. All right, committee reports. A and F? Good, Dan.
I'd like to offer a motion that we approve the total manifest presented this evening in the amount of $3,931,859.42.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second? A second by Caroline. Go ahead.
Mr. Gross, would you mind? Are you ready to do this one tonight?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
So your payroll taxes and benefits are almost $3 million. For special ed activity, the largest one on there is for Durham School Services, which is your in-and-out-of-district transportation and monitors. And then you'll see a series of either out-of-district placements or special education contracted services. We use those in many cases because although we try to hire our staff, if we are unable to do so, we have to use contracted services. So with that are those providers. Those total about $230,000. For your general expenses, the largest one being your SAU 19 assessment fee for this month at $196,771. KS State Bank, this is the student laptop lease. That payment was made for this manifest. Wally Computer, a little over $41,000. Again, that was the Wi-Fi project, and those are also firewall fees. Just to go down on some of the ones that you don't ordinarily see, Arbiter Pay. We do use Arbiter Pay to pay for officials at Goffstown High School and Mountain View Middle School officiating fees, and we deposit those funds in, and then we pay those throughout the year. We typically make two or three deposits. Dan had asked at their meeting, are we on track with our budget on that? And yes, we are. Brian Fornier Landscaping, that was part of the GHS turf field project. What happened on that one was Brian Fornier Landscaping did all of the cleanup, in terms of the final cleanup for the project. And what happened was we ended up paying Mr. Fornier his company, and then in return, we are getting a credit from FieldTurf. The others, we have a few others that were related to that turf project. ProAV Systems was the last payment for the sound system, and then Sousa Signs is also GHS turf project. One other one, a couple of the other ones that came up was AAA Pump Service. That was about $8,700 for Mountain View Middle School repairs. That was a, we had a service call, because we have pumps that pump our, lack of a better word, our septic from the building into tanks, and that failed, so alarms went off, and there was a repair of the pumps and clearing out that mess. So not fun there, but that was done. Town of Goffstown Police Details, $6,600. So that's another one that came up at the A and F meeting. That number is a lot higher than what it ordinarily is, and that was due to the turf field. So when we went from having a Saturday afternoon game to a Friday night games, we didn't know how many people were going to be attending these games, and we were looking, we overstaffed with police details, because we just didn't know what the parking would be like, how many people would be coming to these games. So I don't envision that'll be as high next year as it was this year, but we just simply didn't know. It also included, we rented some lights, portable lights for masked roads, so people, they cross the street, it would be safe. However, Randy has contacted Eversource, and we're putting, there's a street lamp that's going to be installed down there, as well as an additional lighting here by the entrance to the upper parking lot. So those rentals that we had to keep it safe, we won't need anymore. And then lastly, for those of you who don't know, we, the last one was Babe Ruth, Goffstown Babe Ruth. We pay $5,000 a year to Goffstown Babe Ruth Baseball to use Allard Park, which is off the back road. Again, if you didn't know, the town of Goffstown nor the school district own a 90-foot baseball diamond. So the Lions Field over here on West Union Street is used by the varsity team, and then the JV team uses the Allard Park field. And due to the generosity of the Allard family, we're able to use that. So we do pay them $5,000. They use those monies for split seating, irrigation, watering, et cetera. So it's really their cost. Very generous family, and they've been allowing us to use that field for many years. On the food service side, Performance Food is almost $40,000, and hopefully, like pizza, because Gil's Pizza was $5,000 and change. So that was it. Those are the highlights of this manifest.
Anyone have any questions? Alex, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous.
Do you want me to keep going, Dan?
Please.
All right. So the next one, E-Rate reimbursement from 40% to 50%, that is just an FYI, so we did get reclassified. So now we will be getting 10% more for E-Rate, which equates to about $5,000 or $6,000 a year, which is a nice thing. E-Rate is used for connectivity. So Steve Borget does a lot of projects that relate to, say, connectivity in our school district, and if we're buying other, let's say, Wi-Fi devices, wiring to increase connectivity in our buildings, we get monies from the government. So that's good news. The next one, and this one, I know, was somewhat depressing to Mr. Plutier. We are having some supply chain issues with cardboard related to milk. And with that, Hood notified us that they are focusing their supply chain issues in terms of cardboard for regular milk, and the loser in this one will be the chocolate milk. So we may be seeing less and less chocolate milk as they devote their milk cartons to regular milk. So there has been an increase, I've heard, in Yoohoo and Hershey's syrup. I'm only kidding.
[laughter]
So, Dan, I know Dan's upset about this, and hopefully, the supply chain will come back. That's an FYI. Next up is vocational educational contract. I wanted to let the board know that both myself and Kurt McDermott, who is the curriculum coordinator here, we will be meeting with the Concord School District representatives regarding their technical school. Our contract with MST is coming to a conclusion fairly soon, and we are looking at Concord as a potential for our technical educational opportunities for our kids. Certainly not ruling out MST, but just certainly trying to open up and see what Concord can offer. The distance is somewhat similar in terms of the drive time to get there. So we'll know more. Kurt and I are meeting with them in early December, and we'll keep you posted. And lastly, under A and F, I think I might have mixed up or garbled some numbers down with regard to an anonymous donation for the GHS turf field. So I would just need, and hopefully, Caroline, maybe you said you would do that. So this would just be an amendment to that motion to accept that anonymous donation, the amount of $2,680.66.
Motion to amend the amount to what Scott stated.
By Caroline, do I have a second?
Sure.
By Ellen. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous.
And then lastly, the A and F committee did approve the A and F meeting calendar, which coincides with the Goffstown School Board calendar, with the exception of the last meeting, which is typically the school board retreat at St. Hanson College, where A and F typically does not meet. So everything else mirrors, there will be a 6:00 A and F meeting prior to all of those school board meetings. I will let the public know that at the call of the chair, if it's a very light agenda, sometimes we do move the start time from 6:00 to 6:15, 6:30, if it's a super light agenda. But for the most part, they start at 6:00. That's it.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, Jared, Budget Committee.
How much detail do you guys want? Budget Committee met last week on Thursday. No changes have been made at this point. We did go through the district lines and the Bartlett lines. Lot of questions. Two big things that they hit on was stipends to the school board. Lot of questions around that. No action was taken. The one that was most troubling to me, and I'm sure Scott will also do his, if I may, there was a lot of questions around school busing, and some questions around, well, what happens if we can't meet our obligations? Do we get refunds? We did talk about the memorandum of understanding that we had to try to retain bus drivers. There was some big arguments about us having the ability to do that, and some members of the Budget Committee thought that they should be able to review all of our contracts. And it was, it was a long conversation. But again, you know, we did inform them that legally, this is a bottom-line budget, and we are the authorizers of how we spend that money. But there was some large concentrations of us modifying contracts that we have put into our budget so that we can make sure that we maintain the services that our community expects. We do have our next meetings Tuesday and Thursday of this week at 6:00, right here in this room. I hope to be done, at least our budget line items, by the end of this week, but it does, or could carry over into the following weeks as well. Scott, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think you summarized it really well.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Jared?
And just so the board knows, the Budget Committee has not started deliberations on the town yet. So it's just been the schools.
Yeah, we're going to finish up the school before budget, before the town even comes in, so.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ellen.
Did the stipends for school board change or anything?
No.
They stayed as they have been the last years?
No. Yes, that's true. No cuts or additions or amendments have been made to any budget line items yet.
Okay.
I think people are trying, and if you understand the term, a lot of people are trying to get their sea legs
Yep.
being through it the first time.
Oh.
And I imagine that towards the end, we're going to go back to the beginning and make the appropriate
That makes it.
looks, if you will, which will be difficult, because we've discussed it once, and now we need to discuss it again.
It's part of the process.
It is part of the process.
Got a lot of new people.
But the veterans usually go through, and they just start looking, asking questions, and while it's in their mind, they usually just make any motions at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Go ahead, Scott.
I will also add that there was a really good discussion by the Budget Committee about our increased special education costs. You know, there was a modification made due to an out-of-district placement, and there was a lot of good conversation about state revenues and what reimbursement in terms of special education aid, you know, Goffstown will receive in the following year, which I thought was good. And we explained that the state doesn't always fulfill their obligation in terms of, you know, paying things 100%. There are many years where it's 90, 80. There have been years where it was in the 60s, in terms of percentile, where the state did not meet their obligation. So I thought that part of the conversation, there was really good questions, and I shared with the Budget Committee that I took an 80% reimbursement rate in terms of our revenues for next year, based upon our special ed placements this year. But that part of the conversation, I thought, was very helpful.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so you're all set, Jared?
Good to go. Be back here tomorrow.
Thank you so much. All right, CIP, Ellen, you said there was nothing more to report at this time. Okay. PNC, Rheta.
Yes, PNC did meet this evening. We actually had a lot of agenda items, but the top one was a website, and we had both Steve Borset and Nathan Levanway, is that? Good. Attend the meeting. It was a really good conversation. We started to really focus on the, you know, what we want to do, what we can do, looking at areas, evaluating the current site, and getting a better understanding of how people are using the website, the analytics. Stephen was able to share some analytics, and it was surprising, a lot of them are just pass-through clicks going from our website to resources like Schoolology or to, what was the other one?
Power School.
Power School, yeah, so the typical things. So anyways, lots of information there. We are, you know, our goal is to, you know, finish this analysis, get some input, and be ready for the end of June, and they'll be doing updates over the summer. So that started. But it didn't allow us enough time to go over some of the other agenda items, including the mission/vision statement, which we'll be moving forward. But I did want to mention, it's that time of the year again when we start thinking about the Cornerstone and Dreamkeeper Awards. We'll be posting nomination forms very soon, as soon as possible, and the deadline will be Wednesday, November 28th, 29th. Let me see what the date is.
29.
29th. And so we're looking for nominations. People in the community and the schools can nominate individuals or groups for those two awards. Communications will go out via the newsletter, via social media, and through other sources, we'll get the information out there. So we look forward to that, and we'll be bringing forward two nominations at our next meeting, which will be December 4th, 6:00 here at the library.
Great, thank you, Rheta. All right, Policy did not meet in October, so we have a meeting next Monday, November 13th. I know it says the 18th, but it is November 13th at the SAU at 5:30. CNE? Ginny?
CNE did not have an October meeting either, and we will be meeting on November 13th at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
Perfect. Thank you, Ginny. Superintendent?
Sorry, quick question.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Is that going to be the CNE meeting where you present the assessment data?
Data presentation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So a few things for the board this evening. I wanted to let you know, we're working on a new communication tool for athletics and co-curriculars. So at this point, we're evaluating and exploring new tools that would meet our needs and also be compliant with data privacy agreements, as well as our policies. So Mrs. Kohler, Mr. Gross, myself, Mrs. McGrath, we met with Mr. Huff and Mr. Borset last week and are looking at a couple of different communication tools that this would be the kind of things for alert notification if a practice gets scheduled, there's a schedule change, or something gets canceled. And I think what we're doing now, I think we can do a better job with. I wanted to address the Nightlock Citizens Petition Warren article that the board received, and I do want to just share that we will need to discuss the Citizens Petition Warren article. I'm thinking that we'll do so, I spoke to Mr. Gross on either November 20th or on December 4th. Because there is funding associated with this, the board will need to take a vote to either recommend or not recommend. However, I do want to be clear that because this involves school safety, there are many elements to this that I'm not comfortable discussing in public. The board will have the opportunity to discuss this a little more in non-public this evening, and I did let the petitioner know that we would expect to have them come and speak to the board on the 20th or on December 4th. So that's in process. I wanted to let you know that we have been working with Chief Murray, our fire chief, on putting in a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant. This is a 75% matching grant that we could use to put a generator here at Goffstown High School. This has been a longtime vision of the school district, as well as our emergency first responders. As you know, the middle school generator is original. It's old. It does not power the whole school. There are not opportunities to use things like showers. The whole kitchen doesn't have power at Mountain View. So this generator project, if we move forward with this, would be able to power this entire plant. So it makes all the sense in the world, from an emergency preparation, that we would move our emergency shelter from Mountain View to the high school. There's more points of access. There's a lot of reasons why we're looking to do this. Chief Murray has, I think, put in the initial application on our behalf. We actually can't apply for this. It has to be the fire chief as our emergency management director, but we're working on that grant, and we'll have more to come.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just a question on the petition for the Warren article. I know that we'll be going in non-public to talk about that, but because this is a budgetary item, it needs to also go before the Budget Committee. I don't know what kind of protocols we would have, because I don't know if we're going to have any kind of information we can share with the Budget Committee, either in public. I don't believe that they would go into non-public for any kind of review of that information, because I couldn't share anything outside of any conversations we have in non-public.
Yeah, so the first piece would be, it would be up to the Budget Committee when they would even discuss that, or take up a when they would even discuss that or take, take up a review of the Citizens Petition Warren Article. I don't know if there are any other Citizens Petition Warren Articles that the Budget Committee would also need to review. But I think you're right. I think what you can talk about in public, what you can't talk about in public, I would probably encourage you to just listen and share that the school board has discussed the, the Warren Article. And by then, the board may have taken a vote already.
Okay, I probably just wanna consult with you about when we have to, when we come to that bridge.
Thanks, Jared.
So a few more things, if I can keep going. I already shared about the student rep session. You saw the flyer come around. I'd like to thank the School Boards Association for working with me on that. And I'll have to find out if Lil is able to attend. But I think we're gonna have a great group again this year. We have submitted our SAFE grants. So these are grants that are eligible for up to $100,000 per school. Mr. Borget has worked on primarily the grant projects available are for surveillance, access control, and alert notification only. So we focus primarily on surveillance. That has been the part of the grant that we have tried to access. And I don't have any issue talking about this publicly. We just have old cameras that, we'd like to update the cameras with digital cameras everywhere so that we have a little better footage. So that's primarily what we're targeting. With respect to safety, the SAU safety team, which includes all of our chiefs and all of our principals, will be meeting next week with a very full agenda. Mrs. Kohler mentioned the I Am College Bound Day. I would emphasize again, $10,000 these kids saved in application fees because they did it on this one day when they were free. I know another school that I had heard that doesn't promote this event very well, and they had a very small turnout. And I was over here, there were balloons, it was, it was, it was upbeat lifting, there was music playing, it was an exciting day. The school counselors were busy like crazy going back and forth between groups of kids. But this banner and the fact that we had 141 kids apply is really awesome. So again, I'm so appreciative to Mrs. Lewis and her school counselors for all the support that they've done. And lastly, for my report, on October 16th, a citizen presented the board with a petition to request a censure of a school board member. I did speak with our attorney regarding this request. Typically, a censure is used if a school board member engaged in questionable behavior and continued to do so after concerns were raised and the behavior did not stop. I don't think that's reflective of what's transpired here. Mr. Cludier accepted responsibility for this situation and issued a public apology. I do wanna make clear that issuing a censure is an action of the board. This is not an action of the superintendent. So if the board wanted to pursue this, you would be able to do that. At this time, I would ask the board if you would like me to take any further action or if there's anything that I can do to further support the board with respect to this request. Or if you'd like to either take action or not take action, now would be the appropriate time to do so. Or if the board wanted, you could put this on a future school board agenda and discuss in more detail. So I would stop there and ask if there are any questions or if there's anything with respect to the citizen censure request that I can provide any more information on.
Everybody's good with the decision? No, I'm sorry.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, old business. Second read policies, tonight's the night we make motions to move forward. So I'm gonna go through the little list that we have in front of us. So I'm gonna start with Policy BFB.
You want motions to each one, one at a time?
Yes, yeah, please.
I'll move approval of Policy BFB.
All right, thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. The next one is EB.
I'll move approval of Policy EB.
Do I have a second? Ginny, thank you, Ginny. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Next one is EBBD.
Anybody? I'll keep going.
Keep going, Alan.
I'll move approval of Policy EBBD.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is the REG EBCC-R, and that's just to insert a date.
Okay, is that only on the REG, it's not in the policy itself?
To review date.
No, the EBCC-R. There's no change to the policy, it's just in the REG?
No, it's just a review date.
Okay. I'll move approval of EBCC-R.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one, IHCA.
I'll move approval of IHCA.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? Ginny. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining. Are you good, Dan? Dan, are you good?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is IHCA.
I'll move approval of IHCA. We just did that?
Oh, we just did that, I'm sorry. I have it in here twice. Sorry. IG.
JCA.
No, JCA.
Oh, see, I had it all organized. Now I'm not organized anymore. All right, JCA. That was just a title change.
I, I.
Move to. Do I have a second on that one? All right, Ginny, does second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Now we're gonna go to IG.
Is that both policy and REG?
Yeah, we'll do the REG too.
Okay, I'll move approval of Policy IG and Regulation IGER.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is IHBA.
Move to approve Policy IHBA.
Thank you, Nicole. Alan, seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is IHAM.
Move to approve Policy IHAM.
Thank you, Nicole. Second by Alan. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. We're almost done.
And just for clarification, we are doing it with the suggested modifications?
Yes, yep. Yeah, we discussed that at the last meeting.
Right.
IHAMA.
Move to approve Policy IHAMA.
Second. Second by Alan. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. And the last one is IMG.
Move to approve Policy IMG.
Second. Second by Alan. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, guys. All right, so the next is review of the 2024-25 Glen Lake preschool tuition rates. Scott, do you wanna go through that?
Sure, this was an item that was discussed at the A&amp;F meeting. Just in summary, it's been about five years since we have revisited the tuition that we charge for role model preschool students. And during that time, obviously, costs have gone up, you know, for the, the school district. One of the questions that came up at A&amp;F was, you know, why haven't we taken a look at this, you know, less, in less than five years? Like every two to three years? And I think that is a, I think COVID might have been one of the reasons. We didn't have role models during COVID, for one. But secondly, I, I think that is something that is important to do, just to take a look at it every couple of years. So before you, you know, in speaking with Principal Stoyl, she reached out to other school districts to see what, what they were charging for their role model preschool programs. And you have that, you know, in front of you for both two-day, three-day, and four-day programs. We offer three- and four-day programs at Glen Lake School. I will note that in speaking with the Londonderry BA, they haven't looked at theirs in five years as well. So they're gonna be revisiting their, their prices or their costs. So I provided three different options. A 20, a 25, and a 30% increase. And really, it's the board's purview in terms of what to, you know, what to do from there. Our overall budget has gone up about 29%. So I, I felt that the offering you those, the 20 and 25 and 30% options were kind of in line with what would be perhaps reasonable to consider. So without belaboring it more, really, it's a, it's a discussion for the board as to what they wanna do.
Go ahead, Alan.
Just for discussion, I'd be interested in increasing it by a percent. I guess it's 30% would be what covers the increase in cost. I think you said 29% increase?
It was about, yeah, 28.6% between when it was last changed to what our budget is going to be next year.
Certainly should cover the cost, I would think. So if, do you want me to make a motion for discussion?
Nicole's got her hand up. Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I'm just curious to know if Kathy expected any decline in enrollment if prices were to go up.
That was a concern of hers.
Yeah, it is.
That was a concern of hers.
I will, I will share with you that.
And she's watching, so, Mrs. Stoyl, feel, feel free to text me and weigh in.
I do think that whenever you price something, you, you don't always know. I mean, the, you could have less people interested because they're priced out. You could have no, no change. Interestingly, like on food service, we worry about that all the time. And ironically, like Megan's numbers are up a lot at both Mountain View and the high school, even though we did raise, raise prices. So I think I offered what I felt was options of 20% being more of a minimum, 25% being the midway, and 30%. Again, as, as Alan had suggested, our, our budget overall is going up about 29%. At Glen Lake School, it's, it's much higher than, than that. But again, that's, that's within your, you know, your, your purview as to what you wanna go with.
Can I do a quick follow-up?
Oh, yeah, hang on one second, Jenny.
Sorry. Do we have any sort of idea on that increase in costs? Is a lot of it fixed or is it variable based on how many students enroll? So like if we lost some students, would that just be okay because they, we're no longer paying for those students to be there? Or if we lose some students because we've increased a lot and now we still have those fixed costs? You know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, that's a great question. If you look at the last page, I gave you the historical enrollment, which was part of our budget specification. So the last time that we changed, we were about 216 total students at Glen Lake, of which 71 were preschoolers. And then we're projecting, we've got 67, but that number changes, right? Because it's, remember, as Kathy had mentioned, it's a rolling enrollment. So we're projecting 90, you know, 90 for next year. So most of our costs are fixed. We do not, we typically, the only things that might be, that are somewhat flexible is if you have kids in preschool environment that are heavily involved, or you might need a para, that might be something that would be a variable cost. But most of them are, it's the cost of operating your building. We typically have X amount of teachers, special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, custodian. All of that doesn't change.
So it sounds like most costs fixed. So losing some students could be an issue, but we're not projecting to lose students. We're actually looking to be significantly up. So even if we lost a few, probably not going below what we're getting now? Is that kinda where we're netting at?
Yeah. And then the other thing that I put on there, and again, it's not to diminish the cost, right? Because as, you know, for parents out there, costs are going up on, on all these different things. But the time spent, the, the average program is about two and a half hours where they spend. And depending upon, then they have to get, the parent has to, more or less, or a guardian brings them, brings them there. When you look at what costs are for, let's say YMCA, childcare, et cetera, it's having a certified teacher and all of the things that you get for that. When you look at it on an hourly basis, it's ultra competitive in that respect. Like $6 an hour competitive.
Mrs. Stoyl texted me and let me know that for three-year-olds, the program is not full currently, but the four-year-old program is. So right now, we have some availability. So I don't know if raising rates would, would impact people's decisions or not. But that's, that's the current state of the state. We have a little bit of room in the three-year-old program and about full in the four-year-old program for tuition students.
Ginny, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, if I'm understanding your chart, Scott, right now, the, all the proposed rates are cheaper than the YMCA's program?
If you were to look at it on an hour, you know, per hour basis.
Per hour.
So, right, so for the benefit of those who might be, what I, what I tried to suggest was that our current rate is the equivalent of about $5 an hour, whereas the YMCA's after-school, you know, childcare rate is about $7.20. I have not resolicited the Y, so this was, this was almost last spring's data.
Are they comparable to most of the other preschools, would you say?
I did not go out and solicit other, other, other preschools. My, the purpose of that was just to try to demonstrate, like, what the hourly cost was roughly, which I think is pretty competitive for having, you know, trained, certified personnel.
Yeah, I appreciate that you got those numbers, yeah.
Anyone else have any thoughts, comments, questions? If not, we can entertain a motion. Go ahead, Alan.
I'll move that we increase the rate by 30%.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Jared. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Rheta.
I just have a quick question. So the comparative, comparator schools, are they all role model schools?
Yeah, Kathy was able to get, to get that data last year, last school year. I will share with you that, like, I only spoke to the Londonderry Business Administrator because we were talking about something else. And the, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was the person who was responsible for this. And she had told me that they haven't done theirs in, in five or six years. So they are going to redo theirs as well. So I can't, I can't speak to Bedford, I can't speak to Merrimack or Salem because I don't know when the last time they looked at theirs. But, but in Londonderry, it's been five years plus.
Thanks, Rheta. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We have any further discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Scott. All right, so the next is the New Hampshire Immunization Information System.
So this is a new request of the school district. We provided each of you with a packet of information that starts with a memo from me and then has a number of informational sheets regarding this project. So what this is, this is the New Hampshire Immunization Information System. This is a database that we are requesting the school district to participate in. At this point, the majority of healthcare providers, this is where they're putting immunization information. And what this registry allows us to do is if a student, if a student's parent agrees to be, to have their information in the registry, our school nurses would be able to see it. So it saves parents the step of having to get a printout copy, bring it to the school, provide it to the school nurse, who then has to enter it into our system. This is easier, this is more efficient, it's better for parents. So this just started this past summer, so this is a new project. I do wanna be clear, as I said in my materials, our access to this would be considered read-only. We can't enter any information about immunizations. We can't enter any information about students. We just have the ability to see students who are enrolled in our schools and what their vaccine status is so that we're able to complete the state reports that are due at the end of November. So at this point, in order to sign up for this, school principals have to submit a form, and school nurses have to go through a training session before they're able to access. But that's what we're asking for your approval this evening. So this would be to participate in the registry, to allow our school principals to submit the application, and to allow us to access after our school nurses have been trained. Mrs. Kohler, anything to add? after our school nurses have been trained. Mrs. Kohler, anything to add?
No, I just, parents will opt-in at their physician's office, so the opt-in does not happen with our nurses. So when you bring your child to get their physical, there's a form there that they explain to you and say, schools have access to this. Do you want to make sure that your child's, you know, immunizations are available to the school? So we would not be doing any of the signup. It happens through the physician's office only.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Including clinics. Sometimes, you know, go to your doctor, you go to an immunization clinic.
If it's in New Hampshire, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ginny.
I would say this is a huge, as being the nurse who fills out all those forms to send them to schools, and a mom who had to call and ask for all this information to get so that you can send to schools, this is, just seems like such an easy thing to save money, to save time back and forth, that I think it's kind of a no-brainer. And if parents can opt-in or out, it'll save our nurses a ton of time.
Agreed.
And parents and the doctor's office a lot of time. So it just seems like so easy of a decision and, and such a big time saver for everybody, not to be bogged down and, you know, sending, finding, calling.
Thanks, Ginny. Go ahead, Ellen.
Just to confirm, the information's already with the state. We're not giving it to them. This is to allow our, the school district to have access.
Correct.
To check those. That's all this is doing.
That's all this is. We're not providing any data to the state.
Okay, that's all on the parent.
And, yes, all on the parent.
No more scanning and uploading.
Just, just a friendly observation on the suggested motion. It refers to school principals are authorized to submit. I would suggest if whoever reads the motion, I'm not sure that is what happens here at GHS, or it might be the assistant principal. Could it say school principals or their designee? Would that be appropriate?
It, it could. There's a specific form that the principal has to sign. So I think it, and I think in this case, it would be the principal's. It's not even the district level. It's not a superintendent form. It's each school principal has to submit the form.
It's a paper form.
It's a paper.
From my mind, I was on electronic.
No, it is, I believe it's paper.
Then-
And it could be that we scan it and upload it, but it-
It's still paper.
It is paper.
Then it's worded fine?
That is worded fine.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Go ahead, Jared.
Multitude of questions here, just because I get the one sheet of paper. For the NHISS, this is only for those required, it only logs those required immunizations you need to attend public school. Or would it also include other health information?
It's just immunizations.
Yeah.
No other-
So Beesel mumps rubella, or is it going to include, you had the Moderna COVID shot, or any of those items as well?
Those aren't required to go to school, though, right?
They aren't required to go to, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, they're not required to go to school.
Is it all immunizations or only ones required by law?
I thought it was required by school.
I don't know that, well, so I gave you the information sheets. Let me see if there's anything in here about that. But I believe it should just be-
I just got the one page.
Yeah.
We have the memos.
Okay. Well, there, I, I, there were also just a couple of sheets from Health and Human Services, just saying what is the program, how is the information shared. It just provides a little more information. It doesn't say, I'm not seeing anything about COVID vaccines.
My follow-up question is, do we get any kind of report to say that the, the nurse has accessed my child's information and just get a notification of that?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
So if the information is in the system, that parents have already given consent to their pediatrician, they have entered the information, we would only have read access. So no altering of the record, no seeing any other information, just, just immunizations.
But does the parent have to give the school permission to access it?
Yes.
Okay.
And by, by the parents signing up for the registry, they're giving schools access. And I should share that this is, New Hampshire is late to the party. So this is, 49 states have already done all this, so, you know, here we are.
Well, and before the kids start school, they have to hand in their records, which has a printout of vaccinations.
And I would also share, this does not impact anyone who is asking for waivers, who has not had certain immunizations. That doesn't impact any of that. This is just our ability to see what immunizations have been given. And again, this makes it easier for parents. So if a parent says, you know, my information's in the system, they don't have to do anything. If their information's not in the system, they're compelled to do something. They have to provide us with copies of things. They have to contact their doctor's office, they have to bring in the copies. So I think this makes it easier for parents.
Jared, did you-
Mr. Balki, parents do not have to opt-in. It's not an opt-out. When you go to the doctor, it's an opt-in. So for parents who don't feel comfortable, they can still have their immunizations printed and do the upload. So it's not an opt-out, it's an opt-in.
So it's an affirmative?
Yes.
Yeah. Jared, did you have more questions?
No, no more questions. No more statement from me.
Okay. Anyone else? Does anybody want to do the motion, or?
Before we get into a motion, I just, I'm uncomfortable with this at this point in time, just because I know nothing about it. I don't know if we could have a week for a delay or table this and do another agenda item for another week, just because I want to learn a little bit more about this. This, this is something new. I have questions. I can't get the answers. No offense to Brian, not directly towards you, but I have some questions I know that people aren't here, aren't going to be able to answer. And I think that I need to ask those questions to get a good understanding in order to make a vote in either the positive or negative at this point.
Is there anything that Brian and Wendy can get to you for the next board meeting?
Well, questions I had would be some of them. But I know, I know, he's, he's got a list.
I can pass that around, too.
I mean, I can also reach out to-
These are all the printouts from the state.
Yeah.
Is everybody good to, I mean, is it a big deal to put it off?
Yeah, the, the only thing that I would, I would just share with the board, I don't know the exact date, but I know that our immunization reports are due at the end of the month. So this, this database would allow them to do that with more ease. But we have, our next meeting is-
November 20th.
Is November 20th. I think that still gives time.
Week of Thanksgiving.
So they do have to go through the course, the school nurses, if this is approved? And I'm not sure what the timestamp of, of that course for accessing the information, so.
Well, and also, if, if, if we waited until, and, and again, I'm, I'm just sharing logistics. If you don't do this this evening, we probably don't use the registry to do the, to do the reporting.
And actually, Mr. Balki, I believe that the reporting is due on November 15th, so-
Okay, so it's not, either, either way.
Yeah, I think it's in point, yeah.
Is this a once-a-month reporting, once a year? What is the reporting? Like, if we miss it this time, it's not relevant again for a year, or how?
It's not relevant again for a year. But we, we still want to do this. So even if this was January, February, March, April, May, this is a good thing for the school district. So we can, we can wait, send that information around. And if there are specific questions, let me know, and we'll try to get answers.
Yeah. Does that work? Because even if we did approve it tonight, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have time anyway.
It'd be tight. But even if we approved it tonight, you know, the, the likelihood that we get the forms submitted, that they, they process them and get us in the queue, that people get trained, it's, it's probably unlikely anyhow.
Okay.
So another two weeks doesn't really change that.
Okay. So any questions? Email Brian and Wendy.
Do you need a motion for tabling or anything?
No, we're just going to bring it back at the next meeting.
Sorry, team, I just-
No worries.
I understand it.
And it wouldn't have made a difference anyway if we approved it tonight. So we'll bring it back next time.
Thank you.
All right. Rooftop unit. Scott, is that you?
Yeah, it's me. So tonight, we talked about this at the A&amp;F meeting. We have a rooftop heating and cooling unit, which services the Mountain View Middle School Media Center. That is at end-of-life. It has, we have put thousands of dollars into repairs. The request before you this evening is to expend up to $65,000 from the capital reserve fund to replace this unit. Essentially, we're looking at a kind of a lengthy lead time just simply due to supply chain issues. Our capital reserve fund has almost $275,000 in it, so there is ample funds for, for doing it. Mr. Loring, our facilities director, and Dawn, our facility supervisor, obtained two quotes. And it is our recommendation to award the project to Blue and Services and to authorize up to $65,000 using capital reserve funds for this purpose.
Ellen?
Should I ask a question first or make the motion?
Ask a question.
Okay. Is this one of the anticipated uses of the CRF, or is this?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this, this, this fits perfectly for use of the CRF.
Okay.
I would say also that it fits perfectly with the project that we're next on our agenda for municipal lease. But unfortunately, I think the timing is such that this unit is very much important to Mountain View.
Yeah.
And it needs to get done.
Needs to be done.
And ordered, so that we can get it, you know, installed hopefully by the spring.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Go ahead, Ellen.
I'll move that we award the, this project to the Blue and, to Blue and Services, not to exceed $65,000 using CRF funds.
All right. Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. Sorry, Ginny, I didn't see your hand. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. And appreciate that, and we'll get that ordered, and Randy will, will give you updates. So if for some reason, you know, we did allow $9,500 for contingency and/or other work, there are roof penetrations, you have to be careful with, with that. And if for some reason something goes awry, we'll, we'll kind of let you know. Next on your agenda is the municipal bond lease for CIP items. And I wanted to share with you that, and Brian doesn't even know this yet, because I got the email really late, but we're going to be meeting with EMC, which is the consulting group that is, that did an inventory of all of our schools. That's going to happen on Monday, November 20th, at the SAU office. That group has, again, done an inventory of all of our systems and all of our buildings. We provided them with all of our utility bills over the last two years as well. And they're, they're going to give us a prioritized list of the different systems that are either at end-of-life, close to end-of-life, and/or systems whereby a replacement will yield considerable savings to the district, either in the form of a rebate or through just simple, simply better energy usage. So whenever this air-handled, this unit that we're replacing at Mountain View as an example, it's going to be a lot more efficient than one that is 30 some-odd years old. So there will be corresponding energy savings. But what this group is, they've looked at everything in totality. Randy and his team and Dawn, they already have an inventory of most of our mechanical systems. We do know that a third of them are close to end-of-life. We've already replaced a one unit in Mountain View last summer that failed, and then we have obviously another one. So we know that this is happening. So with that said, I'm also working with a financing firm to, on this municipal lease. That's all they do. And so we'll have more information for you on your November 20th meeting, in terms of whether or not you want to proceed with this. There will have to be a decision made by the first meeting in December, and looking at Jared, because if we're going to be talking to the budget committee about this, they're going to have to also weigh in if it's a money article. So if we put it on the warrant, they're going to have to recommend or not recommend. So again, there'll be a lot on, a lot more information on November 20th. But we cannot go past a decision if, if the board decides to go that way. Can't go past that, that first meeting in December, simply because of the timelines for DRA articles and budget committee actions.
Ellen had her-
Anything else that-
Ellen had her hand up.
Scott, could you quickly just explain what a municipal bond lease is?
It's, it's not a lease, it's not a bond. It's, it's, it would be a municipal-
Well, that's the terms being used, so that's why I'm-
Yeah, so it would be a municipal lease. It's basically your financing over a period of time. And typically with, say, mechanical systems, you're going to finance that over a minimum of 10 years, but it could be 15 to 20 years. And it's based upon what would be the average expectancy of that particular item. So some of these rooftop units, they'll last you 20, 25 easy years. And you can finance them for that, up to that period of time. Similarly, we do use lease purchase agreements for laptops and things like that. However, we're not talking about millions of dollars when we do a lease purchase for laptops. This one is so, could be a multimillion-dollar expense, and that's why this board, although you don't have to put it out to vote, I believe that the consensus of the board was that you would, simply because it was a, a large multimillion-dollar expenditure.
And does the district own it at the end of the lease?
Yeah, yeah.
Because lease to me means borrowing and owning it.
It's a lease purchase, so.
Ah, it's more like a lease purchase. Okay.
So Scott, the other thing the board could consider is if we decide that it's, it's November 20th, we, we haven't met with the company yet, we're maybe a little delayed, that if, if not this year, this project would be something that we could pick back up and, and take a look at for next year. When you think about our capital improvements plan, we have millions of dollars of projects and no funding mechanism at this point. So what we've tried to do is to say, we recognize the many projects that we're anticipating we'll need to work on, and let's have a funding mechanism. Because you just saw it, you know, we're, we're replacing the rooftop unit at, at, at the middle school. There are lots of other examples of things like that, that we could try to plan for more proactively, because we have never been able to do that. We've never had funds available to address these CIP projects, and this would be a mechanism to do that.
We don't want to rush it, that's for sure.
We don't want to rush it, but we're trying to be strategic. And this year, having no contracts, this seemed like a good year to consider an additional warrant article. Next year would be another good year.
Go ahead, Ellen.
So this is a mechanism by which the district can request the public to approve us obtaining funds to finance what we need for the big-ticket capital improvement items in our schools.
Correct.
This is not something new stuff we're putting in. This is to maintain-
This is like replacement stuff.
Replacement stuff.
Yes.
Of things we have, such as air conditioners or air handling.
Yeah.
Furnaces, that type of thing. So this would be an article, warrant article, in March, right? Am I right?
Potentially, potentially a warrant article.
That allows the district to obtain that funding to be able to appropriately plan out how we're going to do this. Am I correct with that?
Yes. And Scott will have a list of-
Yes.
Projects with priority.
He's very good at doing that for us.
And again, the, the vision of this being that we have this really robust capital improvements plan with no funding.
Right.
So we know the projects that need to be done. There's just no money and no timeline associated with them. So this would move us into the point of, here are the projects, and now we actually have the funding associated with it as well.
Jared?
Thank you, Mr. Jared. So if we went through with this, just want to remind the, the group, if we go through with a municipal lease purchase, we do not want to move forward with a capital reserve fund infusion. This would be one of those. Pick one and go with it.
Right.
So, you know, knowing that it might not pass, doesn't mean that we should also put a CRF out there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think that was the consensus all along. It would be one or the other.
That discussion quite a while ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, again, Jared and I talk more, because he's the budget committee rep, but, you know, in light of what our, our budget proposal is and the circumstances that we find ourselves, and if you do decide to pursue it, then it, in my, my recommendation is you do one or the other. You don't, you don't do both, because in light of what we're giving before the voters, it's a tough year as it is.
So we'll get the list and potential pricing by our next meeting?
Yeah, by November 20th. You know, that's why I've kind of pressed them, because of the, because of our, we only have a couple of meetings to do this. So again, I don't want to rush the board. If we can get you good, reliable data, and this company is also, they have volunteered to come present to be, before your board. So, you know, for them to come here on, in your first meeting in December is doable, if, if that's what you wanted to do. But, so I think what would make sense is I'll present something on November 20th, and then next steps. You'll, you'll give me directions to your next steps. Do you want to hold off and wait a year, or do you want to hear a presentation from this company as to how they prioritized the different items on that list? What rebates that might be out there from, like, say, Eversource? They have return on investment modeling as well. So if they know that a particular equipment will utilize, say, 30% less energy, they'll give us that return on investment. So you can pick, you can mix and match different items on, on their list. That's what, when they explain it to Randy and I, it is very much an à la carte menu of what you can, what you can do. You can do- You can do a little bit, a little bit more, a lot, it all depends upon how much money you want to spend and which ones make the most economic sense. If you remember, like three or four years ago, we replaced all the lighting in our gyms, and because of the incredible rebates from Eversource at the time, those, it was like $18,000 to do all the lighting in all of our gyms. And the payback on that was like three years, in terms of the energy savings. So you'll, you'll get information like that.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I guess, so logistically, you would present the information to us, and we'd ask, potentially vote to have them come in with a presentation? Why, why wait?
Because I don't know if they're going to be prepared to do that. I mean, we're getting it on the same exact day. I pressed them to go as fast as they could, so I'm getting it. Randy and I are going to get that presentation probably Monday morning on the 20th. It'll almost be impossible for them to then present it that night. I could certainly ask if you want.
Exactly. If I look at the speed of government, next meeting, we're going to get a list, meeting after that, they're going to present, meeting after that, we're probably going to take a vote, and we're being middle of December at that point.
Which is late, right? Because we want to have a decision by December 4th.
I'll do the best I can.
I would think it's the first meeting in December, or it's not at all. Or it's, we're waiting a year.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to do the best I can. If I, if they can do it, I'll work with the chair.
Having not seen the work that they've done, I think I would want to reserve the right to say, I don't think this is ready for the board yet. So I think even though they're coming on the 20th, we have a meeting that evening, without having seen the work and the presentation, I think we should have the ability to say, this isn't quite ready for the board yet, but it might be.
Fair enough. Okay.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Mary?
Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Gross.
Absolutely.
All right, so moving on to staffing.
Okay, for staffing this evening, we have a few notifications. We have two leaves of absence for your notification, and we have three long-term substitutes. For your approval, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 co-curricular sports nominations. For Mountain View, these are all Mountain View, for volleyball, volleyball B, basketball A, basketball B, boys and girls, wrestling and cheer.
All right, so...
You said eight, I have six.
I know, I don't have volleyball. I just have basketball.
So do we, if you wanted to get all eight, we'll need the other two.
Okay, well, the names that I've got, let me read the names. Is this the same sheet? No, there are two sheets, one has eight, one has six. Which one do you like, Mrs. Moran? So the difference is volleyball. So one of these seems to have volleyball, one of these seems to not have volleyball. So let me, let me read them all. Mark Maraska for middle school volleyball, Mike Lee for middle school volleyball B, Gerald Haynes for boys A basketball, Robert Glezer? Glezer? Thank you, Robert, boys B, Chantel Cutter for girls A, Christopher Freitas for girls B, Jack St. Jean, remember Jack, everybody? Our former school board rep for wrestling, and Julia Sharest for cheer. And I apologize if...
So that's eight people?
That's eight people.
All right, so I'll need a motion to accept these nominations?
Motion to accept.
By Caroline, do I have a second? By Ginny, any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Do we need something for the, those are two nom, just notifications?
You don't have to do anything on the notifications.
We don't have to do anything?
Yep.
So the next one is the middle school para. Are we still talking about that?
Yes, so the last piece that we have, and Mrs. McGrath and I discussed this earlier today, arguably, we don't need to bring this to the board for your consideration because we have a number of open positions. But we have a part-time special education teacher, and I would anticipate at our next meeting, we'll bring a nomination before you. We are fortunate to have a former teacher who is interested in a part-time special ed position. We have a vacant full-time special ed position that we've not been able to fill at Mountain View, so at this point, she's not on the nomination list, and we'll bring that to the next meeting. But we have, we have one open position, but we were able to find someone part-time.
And you don't need the para?
At this point, we have three vacant para positions at Mountain View, so the position is unfilled anyhow, but I'll bring that back to the next, when we bring the nomination forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there other business that may legally come before the meeting? No? All right, so we do have non-public tonight. I'll need a motion to go to non-public under RSA 91A 32I, considerations of matters relating to the preparation and carrying out of emergency functions, including training to carry out such functions developed by local or state safety officials that are directly intended to thwart and a deliberate act that is intended to result in widespread severe damage to property or widespread injury of loss of life. Dan, and then Ellen, all right, roll call. Caroline?
Yes.
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 All right, we're going to go, are we able to go down in the conference room?
Yep, GTV, we're all set.
Thank you.